You're like pizza bread, where?
Oh, daylight!
Hi, good afternoon everyone. My name is Alaa Ali, I'm Council Ali, and I'll be chairing today's meeting. And we have an update, and I will let the people of ISE to you, update you.
Hi, everyone. So we've had a meeting, we had an offer in from Council Ali King in relation to this decision, to say that she's proposing to defer, implementing, well, proposing to defer the decision until after the election to be considered by the future Public Health and Communities Policy Committee. And if the public committee vote to take no action in this evening's session, she and the director of management in place agree not to act on the decision at the delegate's March cabinet meeting. And so on that basis, we would defer the decision until that committee to be retaken at that point.
I'm slightly sorry, I don't think we understand that.
Yes, apologies, that was very illegal, my apologies. If, yes, would you like to have a moment? Yeah, I have got a cold, I'm struggling with this, apologies.
Thank you, Chair. I think really, at this stage, it would be really useful to have some context because we've got members of the public here, they're coming completely cold and are not aware of any email that we've received as the panel. I don't know whether it's possible for that email to be circulated so that members of the public can have a read of the proposal, but I think that we're really speaking here a little bit out of context because we're not framing exactly what the proposal is. I don't know whether it's appropriate at this stage to read out the letter and then obviously circulate it to the members of the public, so it's publicly available, if that's possible.
Could I ask that also be circulated to us as well?
So you haven't seen it either? Okay, I'll make a part, I'm sorry, I thought you had, I apologise for that. So we really need this whole thing framing and putting in context, and it'd be really useful by the Chair, if that could be done.
So I think you just need to invite Council King to maybe speak to us.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, apologies for the short notice first of all, panel. But at around four o'clock today, I sent an email to the call-in panel inviting them to consider an alternative to the three suggestions that have been proposed so far. I can read out the email, well, I don't know how we would circulate it to who and how we'd do that appropriately, but... How about I read out what I was going to read anyway, which includes a reference to that? So my approach to allotments has had two key principles, which I hope we can all agree on. Halting the decline of the allotment service, delivering service improvements, and secondly, protecting the struggling park service and continuing to invest in them so that all of Bristol's residents can continue to enjoy the benefits. If we can agree on these principles, then we must also agree that a rent rise is necessary. 2018 was the last year that rents were increased. A small blanket fee of £5 was applied to every tenant in acknowledgement of the impact of austerity. In 2020 amid Covid and the national surge of interest in allotments, I don't believe this was the right time to increase rents when we had a global crisis in which people's personal lives, their ability to work, socialise, and their mental health was impacted in an unprecedented way. Then the cost of living crisis hit, and once again, it felt like the wrong time to consider an uplift. Alongside this, our council has been increasingly financially battered and bruised, a cost of operating crisis as described by our mayor.
Sorry, Council Ali, it's okay if you just talk about the letter, the email?
I want to provide the context to, so this is my full answer. Alongside this, our council has been increasingly financially battered and bruised, a cost of operating crisis described by our mayor, with one in five councils facing possible Section 114 notices in the coming years. Combined with that, is the sharp decrease in resident satisfaction with their allotments and with their parks. The increase on the most common plot size, Plan B, which is under 50% of tenants on this size plot, is £7.5 a week. Doing that thing is our option. Now, we want us to have good quality public services that we can be proud of. I believe in the decision taken in this paper, and that was evidence-led, and it was undertaken in good faith. But this unlocks our ability to improve the service and the satisfaction and pride of our food-growing residents significantly. Writing's allotments were in the news this week, with allotmenters asking, is the allotment service broken? Citing a lack of inspections, overgrown unused plots, foresight rep morale, fences and gates not retained, and emails not being answered. Over the years, I've heard similar dissatisfaction from Bristol's allotmenters. So this has been a difficult decision, but I do believe it's the right one made in the right way. I'm disappointed that it's been called in, which feels particularly cynical considering we've had two community scrutiny sessions with no alternative solutions proposed by councillors. Shortly before the call-in meeting, I wrote to the committee to propose that we defer the decision to the first meeting of the Public Health and Communities Committee after the election. This is an opportunity to embrace the collaborative potential of the committee system and to enable cross-party members to take ownership of the policy. I would particularly look forward to proposals by members of the call-in group, and would welcome the opportunity to work together on this.
Thank you.
We offer the opportunity to get the details of what was in the letter, because right to the last minute, we've had concession and pullback, which is welcome, which should have happened a long time ago. And we've got this quite a long expense and people put in trouble that should have been completely unnecessary. I didn't want to hear a justification for what happened. I know it's a lot of, but people here want to hear your justification either. It's the factual situation that effectively the decision has been withdrawn. On our basis, we can proceed.
Can I just, I think we're the panel, so this is a very unusual start, and it must be very unprecedented and confusing for people to be here today. So I think the first thing we do is we owe the public and the call-in people a full explanation. I think what was agreed in the room before we came in here is what I'd just quite like to explain to everybody. So, you know, we came here ready to hear the call-in at five o'clock, but an offer was made by Council King, and essentially, the offer is that the option for us today is to decide to do nothing with this proposal today. That's on certain caveats. One is that the Cabinet paper is withdrawn, and that it goes forward to the post-election new policy committee in May, or the vice from the past, where the proposal would be re-looked at. And we did, with the legal officer, come up with some particular wording that we wanted to share with everybody. And the idea was that at the beginning of the meeting today, we would do this now at an early stage, because obviously, people have come here with statements and questions, but we didn't really feel that we wanted to put you through the charade of making your statements and asking your questions if we'd already decided that we were going to put it forward. And that is what the panel have decided to do today. We have accepted this offer from Council King, and it will go to the Policy Committee. With a couple of caveats, I don't know whether the lawyer wants to particularly say those things. What we wanted to do was we wanted to ensure that the tenancy inflationary costs charged was disaggregated, separated from the rules and regulations, and we would make a recommendation that it was looked at under those processes.
So let me know if you can't hear or understand, my apologies. As I said, I've had a cough and a cold. So the, what the subcommittee would like to do in this forum now is to resolve, to take no further action, provided that the officer and the relevant member give an undertaking not to implement the Cabinet decision, and that the relevant Policy Committee will, after the elections, retake the decision, considering whether any further information is required, and taking into account the issues raised in the Corbyn. And they'd like to recommend to that committee that they break the decision down into looking at the rents first, and then at a further point, looking at the regulations that affect the allotments.
Thank you, Chair. I'm a little bit confused.
Apologies.
I'm just gonna ask. And with respect, I am talking, I'm, sorry, I'm a bit confused because I'm about to ask my question. Who's not part of the panel?
Can you voice this, not part of the call-in subcommittee? Would it help, Chair, if we were to display the letter on the screen?
Yes, yes, of course.
With the greatest respect, I'm really sorry. I have a question. Who's not on the panel? There's different conversations going on here, I'm a bit confused. And I have a question, sorry? No, no, I, I have a question. You explain, as the Chair, it's your duty to manage this meeting and exactly explain who can speak and who can't. Because if the appellant can't speak, you need to let them know. And if they can, you need to give them an opportunity. But they're confused, these guys are confused. There's a lot of confusion around here, and it's not actually productive. So you need to get hold of this meeting and start chairing it.
I think, Council Ali, what we agreed was that the whole point about this is we sort of lost sight of the chronology of what we expected to do when we came in here. The chronology we expected was that rather than go through the whole public forum element, we wanted to, under Chair's business, make public the decision that we have come to. We're obviously going to have to vote on this in the public meeting at some stage, but the chronology was, we would make the announcement so that people knew the context. We would then, Chair, we agreed, we would then offer the public the opportunity to ask their questions and make their statements if they felt it was still relevant. And then at that point, only at that point, would it come back to us for a decision. I think it also probably would be fitting to offer the people on the call-in panel an opportunity to ask questions or whatever. So it's up to you now, if you decide you want to have to speak to the public first, which is on the agenda, or speak to the panel.
I have got a technical question for our working lawyer, Tilly Sturridge. Pardon? Ali, I was talking, and you started talking with respect, and then I did not even get a chance to ask my question.
Sorry, can I ask you for one minute? Just hold on, let me just clear a bit.
I think, Chair, given this one's been worked as well, if we stick to the proper procedure and just work through that, as per the agenda.
We need clarity, whatever we do, from this point on, the Chair needs to give some clarity as to who can speak, who can't, and what the process and procedure is going to be to get to this decision.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, cool.
I would suggest that we take the public forum first. In the context that we have discussed so far, all the questions and all the statements that have been read by members, if members wish to present their statements, that's fine, the usual way. I would then suggest that we allow, Council Fodder and the councillors would call in the committee to speak and present their case, if they may wish to just to state their case. If there were any questions, if members had any of that. Then Council King, although she's always speaking, she should give another opportunity to present her case. Questions from members of the committee of Council King, and then there's a debate, and the decision is taken. Okay, and obviously, there hasn't been a formal vote at this stage. So members may wish to work with the procedure in a round or quick way than we may have done it if it had been a full hearing, but I would suggest we sit the procedure and work through that in other ways.
Sorry, what do you say you come here?
I think what we agree, most importantly for me, is that the public have turned up here with statements and with questions. And I think, what you say, Leon, is absolutely right. Offer the public, if they feel they don't want to speak to their statement or they don't want to ask the questions anymore because they realise that it's going to be made at the Policy Committee in post-May, then they might just say, thank you very much, that's a good decision, or maybe they might want to change their statements. But I think that's what we have to do. We've made this decision. I think the most important thing is for the public to do this. I don't really think that, you know, the call-in committee, it's been, the decision's been arrived at by us. So, you know, the call-in committee have...
With respect, we called this meeting because we've called in, and we've not been given the opportunity to speak, but...
You wait for until he turns. Do you wait until he turns, please?
I didn't know anyone had any terms, you haven't called anyone.
Because we're going, as a procedure, we ask him in the final, then we can ask the public, then we'll come to you.
Thank you, Chair. I don't think it's for us to tell the public they can't speak, because if they're...
We give the public a speech.
But what I would suggest is if they want to postpone their contribution, that they be told that anything they put in close to the policy...
Can I ask someone to give the mic to you? That's Alaa. Oh, sorry, yeah.
Can I just say something very quickly? You know, many of us would still like to speak. We understand the situation rapidly evolving and changing. But if we aren't going to speak, can we please have a microphone?
Yes, you have a microphone, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, if you say that, I'll simply give the microphone.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, no, I...
Yes, we're just waiting for it.
Okay, so it's questions first, have we got more, Drew?
Could you organise yourselves so that we get one after the other? That's all right?
We were expecting the Chair to read out this.
Can we have Tom, please?
No, Tom.
Lauren?
It's lovely, it's lovely, it's lovely, please.
This is a statement and question. Thank you for calling the decision of Bristol City Council to raise the allotment rents. I have advanced, Council Ali, and I've been asked a lot, and I'm able to work. As a disabled person who fills in the council's consultation questionnaire, I don't feel that my views were taken into account in the Equality Assessment. In the council's report, it said that over 75% of disabled people who filled in survey disagree with the analysis that the EIA did not identify any potential impacts on disabled people. For this reason, I'm burdened from the decision taken about rents to do regarding the public sector equality aims. I also feel very demeaned by the experience of having to public in the dual my current circumstances in order to convey my own to the council.
Thank you, Christopher.
Okay, Chair, you've got my statement. I was going to speak to it, but it does appear not to be welcome to be done. What I would like to say is, if I understood this correctly, with that caveat, then the decision should be pulled back, and we will be re-tammed afresh by committee following the elections in May. I welcome that. I think it's a significant step forward. It takes the decision, hands it to the Cabinet, in whom we have lost members, and hands it to a committee in whom we have every reason to have members in the future. And it gives us an opportunity to work constructively with members and officers to come up with something that will satisfy us all. And that's the day that's been missing, so that is going to be our process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
First of all, quite as carried on here, what we're saying is that the decision about the rent rises is going to be put to the committee after elections, not the call-in decision.
Yes, that's correct.
I mean, it does feel a bit strange making this statement in what's been said, but I will do it in any case. So I wanted to genuinely thank the officers for finally providing the financial information that we've been asking for for ages in the papers for this meeting. But obviously, you know, this meeting was about the consultation decision-making process, so that... Sorry, I'm so confused now, I don't even want to say it myself. The consultation decision-making process is over. So this call-in was about the process, apparently. And so, that pain was symptomatic of the fact that we have drip their information over the last three months. The information has been completely full of contradictory facts and figures and hard to interpret. We had to ask dozens of questions to Cabinet scrutiny for council as well as put in loads of new information across, simply in order to understand why the new rents were set as they were. And after all that, there's still no clear and transparent explanation for why the rents were made as they were increases. So the consultation decision-making process has not provided this presumption in favour of openness because of the total inadequacy of the provisional essential function. So, you know, I just hope that when it comes to the new committee that it goes to, that there's clear indication of that to it, so that sensible decisions can be made.
Thank you, Joanna.
Right, I wanted to say this consultation went wrong right at the beginning. And I wanted to mention the allotment forum and the side reps. These are established groups of the lot of tenants with huge knowledge and huge commitment, they demonstrated it. And if they'd been asked, for example, about the new rules at the beginning, they would have said this is not a good idea. That would have left us all free to have a proper throw-up consultation about the rents, which, I think we all agree, do need to go up. Instead, this was a 40-page document that was proposed so absurd that the disaster noise almost drowned out the new rents. These were tucked away, just two sides of A4, and it had a schedule at the back with no budgets, no supporting budgets or explanation. I really welcome what's happened today, thank you very much indeed. And I hope that all that missing information will enable a proper consultation and consultation to happen in the future and for the right decisions to be made. That's right, thank you very much.
Dr Stephen.
Thank you, thank you very much. It is hard to react on the roof to information that we have just learned 10 minutes ago. I had prepared what I intended to say in the light of circumstances 15 minutes ago. And what I'd like to say is that if the news we've just been given means that Council King has, at last, at the 11 and a half hour, accepted the arguments that we have been consistently making since the beginning of the consultation, which is that a moratorium to do a proper job was always needed, then I'm pleased. However, I regret that it has taken us so long to arrive at this realisation. The forum, the allotment forum, is the council's chosen method to interact with its tenants. And that forum voted on the 24th of January on motion which stated that the forum believed that the consultation on rents was the flawed process and should be rerun and not extended. That information wasn't even passed to the decision-making Cabinet to form a part of their considerations. And this is a shameful abuse of process. And if Council King has now accepted what we have consistently said, which is that process... Process has been abused, then we accept her recognition and we welcome. Process has been abused, then we accept her recognition and we welcome it. Thank you.
Before I call the next person, can we remember to keep it to one minute, please? Ed.
No, thank you. We submitted a joint statement from community groups. I think it's still, hopefully, relevant to leave that out. And hopefully you can take something from it. We do support the proposal to call in the decision. Very perplexed, but I think hopeful about what's happening today. So firstly, on the consultation, we weren't consulted as groups. Some individuals received the emails sent to tenants. The consultation forum was only designed for individuals to respond. So, for example, groups could not answer the questions on protective characteristics. And so the consultation data will also have shortcomings. The council continued their original proposals for rent capitations and water charges without any discussion of alternatives. We don't think the meaningful consideration was given to the consultation responses. The thirty-one percent respondents who did highlight the negative impact on protective characteristics seem to have been ignored, and the decision looks like a foregone conclusion. More information should have been supplied before the consultation, certainly before the decision, and some of the information is only published after the decision. In terms of equality aims, from the F O I request and information held on community groups, it's clear that the council has not yet had a good grasp of the range between community groups, their membership and reach, nor the roles they play in building directors and places of communities. So, we welcome the decision to revisit this following the election. Thank you.
Can I have a moment, everyone, please? Speak to one minute.
Tim, please. Oh, sorry, Neil.
Tim?
No, Tim.
Okay, Neil.
No.
Okay, Christie?
No.
Mel?
Oh. Well, I fully endorse all the evidence presented from our statements today, which you've already admitted before my note. But don't wish to add to them, because what I wanted to say was, I was to make heartfelt plea to all the councillors here today who are fully committed to fair and open dealings to refer this matter back to a full character meeting, which of course that's not an option now, I guess, where a properly reasoned collaborative process can be followed to support, protect and defend our allotments for the future generations. For this, any councillor here will be thanked and remembered by the thousands, the many thousands of us in over a hundred allotment sites, community directors and authors, spread throughout every part of the city, and of course all our networks of family and friends. This is the first time in three years the Call-in has questioned a decision, and now the mayor is losing his power to overturn all decisions and his cabinet is dissolving. Let us hope scrutiny will continue to question all other decisions that affect so many that have been made by so few. And that catalogue of errors that started in that so-called consultation, starting with John, anyone for tennis, James, saying, asking us lot and told us how often we played tennis on our allotments, and if we ever did. And it went on and on from there. It was an absolute disgrace, shameful and embarrassing.
Okay, Vanessa, please.
No.
Okay, Anne? Caroline? Okay, Katie?
Chair, I'm a little bit confused and blindsided by this change in proceedings. It seems like an offer has been accepted to have this decision deferred and reconsidered by the Policy Committee. We can only hope that the Policy Committee is going to take into account all of our objections and all the evidence that we've collected and presented on the board con lunt. The subcommittee, do you have confidence that the Policy Committee is going to be better informed and more accountable? How are we going to ensure that these several errors will be resolved next round? Should this not be covered in some of the caveats from the offer that you've been given a few minutes ago?
Thank you, that completes the forum.
So, that concludes the ballot forum, thank you.
Right, hold on, we'll just, can we pause, pause? Right, I think at this point in the meeting, we've got two options. I appreciate members of the public that this is quite perplexing, that's an excellent word, as to which term is taken, but I think it's probably hopefully clear now that the option is to defer the decision to the Policy Committee. That's under consideration by the Call-in Committee now. We could either, the Call-in Committee could decide to take this decision now, which of the three options they would like to go for. The alternative is to follow all the steps of the Call-in Committee procedure and then at that point decide which of the three options they would like to go for. I think the Call-in Committee, that's a decision if you need to make, if you could make that decision now, that would be great. And we've heard, which is fantastic, contributions from members of the public that have come.
Chair, may I ask a question? We've just heard that there is some concern that it's not defined enough in terms of this new consideration. I hope that makes sense. And I think, I would like to suggest, since we are all together, that we open that up to a discussion, rather than going down the route that we were going to go down. Because we have people here, on both sides, we have the Call-in Group, and we also have residents who have taken time. And I would actually like to hear what those, you know, that detail is. I can hazard a guess, but I would like to hear it from the people who have obviously given this small thought.
I'm really sorry, Call-in panel, that's...
Chair, as asked, that we go through, you've made some very clear suggestions. And I think that we need to go through those incrementally to then come to a course of action, a decision. And then whatever that decision pathway is, whether that generates a further discussion about how we move forward with that. I don't know whether that's a proposal that we can work with. So, taking all the options before us, either then going with that one or rejecting it, moving on and doing it that way. I don't know how else we're going to move on. And I'm not in favour of us having an open and free discussion, because I think if you ask ten people, they're going to get twenty different answers. And I think that's not going to give us necessarily the clarity that we need at this stage. Thank you.
We will vote for it, yes.
I think it would be worth, Sinead, just once again, going over what we actually recommended. So there's some clarity and that that is properly... So you need to be really able to explain to everybody here what the recommendation is, and then I think we could take a vote on it. So there are elements of it, and I think those elements that we've got written into that do answer some of your questions. Because, I mean, you know, what we're saying is that it's a new regime after May, where we will not have a cabinet decision anymore, we have a Policy Committee. It will be a good test for our Policy Committees, because what they're going to do is they're going to... They're going to come up with policy. So what we're recommending is that they separate out the two elements of this cabinet paper, because we think that that's where some of the confusion was originated. And that the Policy Committee review the rent increases and then separately then review the rules and regulations. And I suppose that an element, you know, it's an element of trust in the fact that these new committees will thoroughly investigate.
Chair, can I perhaps suggest, maybe Sinead reads very carefully the proposed decision, and then there's no vote on that decision? So it's absolute clarity what's now been decided, so then we can please read it back.
Chair, can I ask a point of order, please?
Are we allowed to ask a question? For clarity?
Sorry, you're saying, "No, I can't ask a point of order, I can't raise a point of order"? You just said, "I can't do that".
You're not a member of the subcommittee? So, yeah.
Chair, we called this committee. You're here because we called this in. We're being excluded from commenting on the things we've tried to call in, which are three points from the constitution of this council. And with respect to, people have taken the time to come here and provide vast amounts of evidence and insight. You know, we've now been excluded from commenting.
The situation has obviously changed as the meetings have been. We had the offer coast to King, we had an indication there was a decision to wish to take. We've heard from members of the public. I would suggest, most effectively peculiar this meeting now, I would suggest would be if Sinead reads aloud the proposed decision, so we're all very clear what members have been proposed to sign upon, the decisions that have been taken, and we then close the meeting.
I still have a point of order.
And I think we did agree earlier that all the public's statements submitted to this meeting can automatically be forwarded to the Policy Committee. So that members of the public, we can do that. So can I suggest, Sinead, now reads the decision aloud?
I still have a point of order that I would like to make, please.
Well, Chair, Councillor Tazin is not actually a member of this subcommittee.
I just think, quite for Sinead, that one of the things that you might want to put into the proposal is that we also said that the Policy Committee would have sight of the public forum for this, but also the Call-in Papers. So they'll have a very good overview of exactly where they got to, and they can pick it up and then work with it from there.
Whilst I would agree that obviously a lot of the mess on this came from the mixing up of the conditions with the rent rises, that caused a lot of trouble. It's not worth telling the committee that will be suffering in the aftermath of the elections what they, how they should consider this. They will make the decisions based on what they think is right, and they should have listened to, and I'm sure they will listen to, all the points of view before they come to their decision.
So, Call-in Subcommittee, there are three options open to you as a result of this meeting to decide. The first is that you can resolve to take no further action. The second is that you can refer the matter back to Cabinet, with issues to be detailed in a minute for Cabinet to consider. The third is that you can refer the matter to full council for a wider debate. With the first option, we have the, you could include conditions saying that you will take no further action, provided the council and, sorry, provided Councillor King and the director give an undertaking not to implement the cabinet decision, and that the relevant Policy Committee will take this decision, considering whether any further information is required and taking into account the issues raised in the Call-in and the questions raised in the public forum. You'd also like to recommend that that committee, apologies, I lose my own authority, makes a decision first on the rents to be levied, and then considers separately at a later stage a decision on the regulations.
Can we move to the vote? Who's in favour of the first option? The first option? Who's in favour of the...
So I propose the third option, which is the one you've just read out, Mr Sinead Willis.
Yeah, I call for vote.
Sorry, I just think that the way that we dealt, that those three options is a bit confusing. I just don't know that that apology exactly... I mean, I think the proposal is that we saw that there were three options coming to this committee, but we've had an offer of a fourth option, which we have accepted. And the fourth option is that we, you know, as, we're not going to read out Sinead's thing again, but that we refer the decision-making powers to the Policy Committee post the May election. So that's the fourth option. So I would propose, so allowing for all of the, I mean, I think you get a written up, you write up exactly what you've said. So those words are exactly what we're agreeing to with the caveats that are there. And we are now, I am now going to propose that we go for the fourth option, which was made at a latest proposal this afternoon from Councillor King. And I would propose that we accept that proposal.
Just, that's my fault, apologies. There are three options. The fourth option I gave is actually the first option, just providing an undertaking is given. Apologies for that lack of clarity there.
So, are we going to vote on option one?
On option one with the... Yeah, we are, yeah.
Don't like the sound of that, do you?
I vote for...
We're supposed to trust, aren't we?
I vote for... For... For...
For...
All for myself. Of course, thank you. That concludes the meeting.